Yes.
Um, since the second one is gonna just ask for a continuance, do we wanna like? Move it forward and let them go?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no, because I don't, I don't know who's here for the.
For a continuance, do we wanna like?
For the first one.
Forward and you're back on.
Uh.
It would make sense, but the posted time.
I don't, I don't know who's here.
Oh.
Got an echo going on or something.
We do, um. Yeah, at seven fifteen, we can pause the current hearing and just open it up and let them continue and leave. So we're at the posted time, so no one. Feels. I just, I'd, I'd hate to have them wait here until however long to continue something.
Why don't we, why don't we see how the first one i- is progressing? I mean, I think there is probably a fair amount to present there. Um, but, uh, I think that's a good suggestion. If we've got an opportunity there, just let them, if that's what they're going to do.
Yeah. That, didn't we get that letter saying that that was their plan?
Uh, yeah.
We are all set on YouTube. David, if you wanna call to order.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, good evening. I'm calling to order the South Borough zoning board of appeals, uh, meeting on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures, adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law in June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation, no in person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. So, uh, with that, the first item we have on the agenda is thirty-five Pine Hill Road, Alfred Hamilton and Diana Wainrib for a variance. Uh, do you have the, the, uh? Application to read?
Yeah, you want me to read the legal notice?
The legal notice, thank you.
Right. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. With regard to the petition of Alfred Hamilton and Diana Wainrib, thirty-five Pine Hill Road, Southborough, Mass., map seventy-nine, lot fifteen. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow construction of a garage that will encroach upon the thirty-five-foot required other street setback. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash eight-point-two D three D and section one seventy-four eight-point-two D three C.
Right, and?
I will move him over.
Do we, yeah, so we, we have somebody ready to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah. He's just loading over.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, excellent. Um, my name's Al Hamilton and, uh, this is my charming wife Diana. And together, um, we manage a open space parcel on Pine Hill Road that runs about twenty-five acres. And on that, we, um, also maintain the Pine Hill Meadow Victory Garden where we raise vegetables that we then, uh, donate to, um, food pantries, including about nine hundred pounds this year to, uh, the South Grove Food Pantry. Um, as a consequence of maintaining this parcel, I own a whole bunch of equipment, which is my hobby. I own tractors and brushhogs and, uh, big cultivators and the likes, and I need a place to keep it, to be frank. Um, when we moved into the house in nineteen ninety-six, uh, Angelica Lane, which borders our property on the south, did not exist. Uh, and as a consequence, we would have been subject to a twenty-five-foot side setback requirement. In the early two thousands, Angelica Lane was built. And I acquired a ten-foot strip along Angelica Lane from the developer. And, um, but at the same time, after, um, substantial discussions with Ms. La Boy, uh, it appears I also had imposed on me a thirty-five-foot other-street restriction. So, um, things changed and it, or rather, they changed, but they didn't change, uh, because I had, I acquired an extra ten feet, but I was subject to an extra ten feet of restriction. Um, the long and the short of it is, is that what we would appreciate, a, a variance to allow us to build a garage. The garage will run about eight feet over the twenty, the thirty-five-foot line. Uh, and I think I, I provided you guys with pictures of, of basically where it's going. Uh, we have substantial, uh, neighborhood support, the, the Meadow and the Victory Garden are neighborhood activities. And I think you have letters from a number of the abutters a- asking you to approve it. So that's really, um, kind of, in a nutshell, what we're asking for is we're asking to essentially, uh, be subject to a twenty-five-foot other-street setback requirement. And that's based on a structure requirement, which is the structure is Angelica Lane.
Uh, Mr. Hamilton, uh, could you just, uh, tell me, explain briefly, there's something about, uh, you, you, you had some issues with the way it's measured, like where that, that setback is being measured? Just clarify a little bit there?
I, I, I went back and forth with Ms. La Boy because the, the, uh, other-street setback says setback from the street. And as opposed to, so the street, i- if I were subject to the street, that is the physical macadam, I'd actually be fine, because there's about an eight-to-ten-foot buffer strip which has trees, which is, you know, the, the traditional right-of-way. So, but, you know, uh, I believe Ms. La Boy's characterization is that that's not how it's typically measured. So, uh, yeah, I, I gave up at that point and said, you know, all right, I'm just gonna try to ask for a variance.
Well, I, out of curiosity, where, where is it being measured from if it's not from the street?
It's being measured from the edge of my property effectively. So that, uh, my, my property, uh, butts the right-of-way, which, and then there's about ten feet between the edge of the right-of-way and the macadam.
The pavement.
The pavement.
The pavement, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I used a old word.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I, like, I, I look at it and I'm not sure I completely understand. I, I, I read that there was some, um, uh, contesting about exactly where to measure. I'm just trying to understand that a little bit better.
Well, the, the, so the, the, the zoning law says street. And you know, I guess you could debate what a street is, but, you know, I, I, I don't wanna get into a lengthy legal debate and hire lawyers. I just wanna build a garage.
Right, okay. All right, um, well, if you don't have anything else then to, at, at this moment to present, I can open it up to some of the members to, to ask questions.
Sure.
Um, uh, Doris, do you wanna go first? You have question, oh, oh, Craig, Craig's raising his hand, yes, Craig?
Okay, oh, okay, you go, Craig.
Um, is the, who owns the road? Is that a town road or is that a private?
That is, it's a town road. The town, the town accepted it.
Okay, and?
It is Angelica, correct?
Yeah, it's Angelica Lane.
Okay. And do they also own the right of, the, the space between the, the macadam, as you say, in your lot line? Or do they just?
Yeah, it's, it's just like any other, any other town parcel, you know, you, you don't typically own the first ten or what, fifteen feet of, of your front yard, because it's right-of-way, which is owned by the town.
Okay. And all right, and, and we really don't measure it from like the, the, the street itself, that seems odd. I mean, like, a lot of communities measure it from like the middle of the road, sometimes.
That's what I was thinking. Um, so, so, uh, sorry, Craig, to, to interrupt, but, so you have your property, you have the macadam, a- and then you have, uh, Angelica, is that, is that how?
No, so to make some, the, the pavement, so you have, my property is here. Then there is a strip of dirt with trees and grass.
Okay.
And then there is the pavement. And, and, and the strip with the trees and grass is owned by the town, just like in any other, other road, it's.
But by the pavement, you mean the street, there's no sidewalk or?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
And then there's a structure in the back, what structure is that, that's on the, the plot plan that you provided? Looks like it's yours and it encroaches in there as well?
There's a shed that's been, that was there when I bought the house twenty-six years ago.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I just, I'm with you, I, I don't understand that. Anyways.
Yeah, those are my questions.
I, I driven by the property, the shed is small. And I'm sure it's, it's a much different frontage to the next property line on the shed, I don't think the shed's an issue. I, I had a, a question, just for clarity, Mr. Hamilton.
Sure.
Thanks for presenting all the supporting material, I do appreciate that a lot. Uh, back when you bought the house and then subsequently, I guess in two thousand four, certainly correct me, is, you bought the strip of land when they, or the early two thousand, you bought the strip of land, uh, when they developed Angelica Lane? And you mentioned that, this is aside from our measurement question, that it was only twenty-five feet. Is, is, did I read that correctly?
So when I bought the house, Angelica Lane didn't exist, and so I was subject to a twenty-five-foot side setback requirement.
That's how I read the application.
And then I acquired the strip of land uh, next to the town's right-of-way and the Angelica Lane. Um, and frankly, I thought I would still be subject to the twenty-five-foot side setback requirement. And?
Yeah, I'm trying to hear that side of it through, sure.
Yeah, but now it turns out that I, you know, I only discovered I'm subject to a thirty-five-foot other-street requirement, because Angelica Lane is a street.
You know, it's an interesting street, um, because I did go down there, it's particularly narrow street, I don't know if the other members have recently taken a ride down there. Um, but I, I, it's just a street that's going to just have those several properties on it.
Right, it, it's, it's a street that goes down to a cul-de-sac with four houses.
That's it, right.
Yeah.
And there's, you'd also mention the application and looking at, there's really no other place to put it. I, 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 just from a sideline, I, I agree with that, it's wetland behind your home.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it grades downs steeply, uh, but with that said, once you put this addition on, it's pretty, it'll be pretty close to the road. With that said, it's, it's gonna be.
Uh, well, yes, it, it'll be twenty-eight feet from the, from the right-of-way. We use, we use the proper term, you know, wh- whatever you wanna call it, you know, it, 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 no, yes. It's, you know, it's shielded by a line of trees and, and a, uh, and a hedge of, uh, was it, forsythia?
Yeah, no, I, I saw there's a hedge there, a forsythia, right, just the road itself is narrow, I don't know. I found that unusually narrow road, that's, that's my questions, um.
Yeah, okay.
Um, if I wanted to defer to Mike or Paul.
Uh.
David, really quick, sorry, would it be helpful for you guys if I shared the plot plan? From the application?
Yes, it would.
Give me one second. There we go, can you guys see that?
Well, that's much clearer, yeah, the one, uh, PDF that I, yeah, that really, really.
I know, I, I was looking at the one that was scanned in, I was like, the numbers are pretty blurry, so. There's that.
Oh, so, yeah, so that shows in, in, in a different sort of shading of gray, that's where you're proposing that third day.
That's correct, yeah.
Right here.
And so, yeah, so the, the line where the, the number goes to, Mr. Hamilton, that line is not the edge of Angelica Lane, but the edge of the right-of-way?
Well, it's not the edge of the pavement, it's the edge of the right-of-way.
Okay, okay, got it, all right, thank you, sorry, sorry that's taking you so long to figure that out, but I, I appreciate your patience.
And the shed, again, I know you were touching on this, I was looking at, uh, my zoning manual. Uh, the shed is also yours and is pre-existing, correct?
Yeah, it, it was there when we bought the house.
I thought so, I, I went by the property, but it was just one of those things, I just, I wanted to make sure that that was yours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
So I, I know this isn't a, um, there's no issue with the shed where it is, but it looks like the shed already creates a side setback variance just by being grandfathered. Because it is within, it looks like it's within ten feet of the property line.
Yeah, but we're adding to the.
There's no road there.
Well, actually, we're, we're not necessarily adding to it, because we're not making it any worse.
It, it is not making it worse, it's true.
But that was the point I was trying to make.
No, I, I, I see, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay.
It would, it would be one thing if we were expanding the shed and that was further approaching, so we're adding uh, to, to an additional, to the existing non-conformity, whereas this is, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Paul, did you have anything you wanted to ask, Paul?
No, I don't actually have any questions, I'm, I, I follow and see what's going on here and what's being requested, so.
Okay. Um, sorry, Mike, did you, I don't know, did you have more that you?
No, everything, everything's been kinda touched upon, I, I, but I used to live on Pine Hill Road, so it was, it was nice to go back to this area. Um, but, uh, no, I, I took a look at everything, I don't have any questions at the time, thank you.
Okay. Um, Laura, do we have anybody else who wants to, uh, from the public who wants to, um, comment or, or ask questions?
No, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, um, and as Mr. Hamilton stated, uh, and, and as we all saw, we actually have, I believe it's maybe four letters that are in support of the project. Um, so I, I, we can clearly, you know, take the view that the abutters are not having a problem with it, if anything, they're in favor of it. So, um, uh, and I, 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 I don't really have any additional questions to ask beyond what I asked already. Uh, I think the, the rest of the board has done a good job, um, asking questions, um, uh, regarding this application. So uh, how do we feel, are we ready to, um, uh, co- close the public meeting and discuss, or how does everybody feel?
I mean, I have no other comments, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion to close the public hearing with a second, uh, I'll in favor respond with aye, Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
And William's eye as well, so, okay, the, the, that would close the public part of the meeting. I, I don't know as a board that we have more we need to really talk about, I think we understand pretty clearly, uh, the, the boundary issues that Mr. Hamilton brought forward, uh, doesn't seem like we have some serious concerns here, so.
I'm, I'm happy to make a, a motion if, uh, if people are ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
All right. Having found that, uh, there is a structural hardship in the creation of a, a new road that wasn't there when they originally bought the lot, and that by allowing an encroachment into the side setback, um, as shown in the plot plan, delivered, um, I would move to approve the variance request for, um, Mr. Hamilton and, and Ms. Wainrib.
I'll second the approval of that.
Okay. We've got a motion to approve the application, it's written, uh, and a second, all in favor, respond with aye, Paul?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, William's eye as well, the, uh, the application is approved. Uh, congratulations and, uh, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. All right.
Night.
Good night.
Night, night. Thank you.
Night, oh.
Okay. So the second item we have on the agenda is fifteen Main Street, um, Laura, do you want to, uh, read that, uh, posting as well?
Yes. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven fifteen P M. With regard to petitions of Karen Canal, fifteen Main Street, Southborough, Mass., map fifty-four, lot twenty-eight. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow an accessory apartment. The property is located in the Residential A District, relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash eight-point-two and section one seventy-four dash nineteen.
All right, thank you, and, uh, do we have somebody for the applicant?
We do, um, the lawyer for the applicant, Joel, is here, and I am moving him over.
Hey, uh, can you all hear me?
Yep, we can, thank you.
So, um, we, uh, initially were, were planning to withdraw, we, we do not want to withdraw this, this application. We submitted a letter, um, apologize for being last minute but late yesterday, and we would like to continue the hearing. Um, we had a, another round of discussions this morning with town council and with staff and, um, we believe we have a path forward here that, that will work, um, seeking a special permit for an alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming use, but we need to amend the plans. Um, so I, you may have an opinion from, from town council coming, I'm not sure, but in any event, uh, we, we would like to continue so we can amend those plans and then supplement the package with those plans and, and the narrative.
So are you requesting a continuance to a meeting i- in about a month's time, in February then?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, all right. Um, Craig, I don't think we need to ne- necessarily do anything, right? I don't think we have a problem with that, it's just he needs to make that request. You're on mute.
Gosh darn it, I tried to be, um, I think we need to vote to accept the, the continuance. So he needs to request it with a date and a time for the hearing, and then we vote to, uh, accept.
Okay, uh, Laura, what do we, what do we have on the calendar for our next meeting?
Um, fifteen Main Street was the only application, so whatever time.
I'm sorry, what, uh, the, the, the date?
Oh, for the date, I'm so sorry, uh, February fifteenth.
Okay. Okay, so, um, all right, um, so the request is to continue the hearing for a month to February fifteenth. Uh, I think we just need to take a vote here, so all in favor, respond with aye, Doris?
Aye.
Craig, do you, uh, make a motion?
I think, I, yeah.
Exactly, point of order.
Okay. Um, Mr. Quick, are you, are you okay with the fifteenth at seven?
Yes, yes, the fifteenth is, yes.
At that time, that works for you too?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, the, um, continuance to February fifteenth. If I said that right.
I'll second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the continuation to the fifteenth with a second. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye, against, nay, uh, Doris?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
William's eye as well. Okay, thanks, thanks, everybody, so we'll continue that and we'll pick it up again on February the fifteenth.
As, yeah, as a question, um, usually when we continue, uh, is there a sign thing where we, we continue? Or is that just the extension of a, of a timeframe? I wanna make sure we, we document it correctly, and if Mr. Quick has to stop by and see Laura for a, a signed continuance.
We're, we're happy to do that.
Okay, Laura, can you get in touch with, uh, with Mr. Quick if, if that's required?
Absolutely, I don't believe they're extending any timeframes, um, so I don't think any waivers need to be signed, but I will double-check if we need a formal signature, um, and I will touch base with you, Joel.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I think that said, there is no need for any, any discussion or, or public comment, since we're continuing it.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quick.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we had a couple other items on the agenda, uh, is the next one, the, the meeting minutes?
It is. And I actually have a correction on my own minutes if I can.
Okay.
Um, I forgot to add in the motion to adjourn at the very end, so I have already added that in, but don't know how I missed it.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure I actually got through all those, uh, what about, what about anybody, uh, other? Does anybody else on the board have an issue with the minutes from the prior meeting? That would have been, was, would, that would have been, uh, November, correct?
November sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I was not present, so I'm, I'll abstain from whatever discussion.
Yeah, I'm good with everything.
All right, Mike?
Um, I'm checking these over quickly.
Yeah. I'm not sure I got all the way through, I, I hate to admit that, but. Uh, Doris, did you have any concerns?
No, but, uh, no, I did not.
Oh, was it that quick? All right, yeah. Be pretty hard to have some issue here with the, with that.
Yeah, there's nothing, not that there's.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Yeah, that's what, okay, just.
So, so we, I think we need to move to approve the minutes as, uh, Laura has amended them.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, the meeting minutes as amended?
I'll second.
All right, we have a meeting to approve with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, against, nay, Doris?
Aye.
Craig?
Abstain.
Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And William's eye? All right, that's four in favor, one abstain, okay, the next item of business is the, Laura, you have, you have updates on the, on the forms?
Yeah.
For special permits and variances?
So the goal for revising them, and you guys feel free to chime in with feedback on any of it. The goal was to kind of provide a little bit more clarity for both us and the applicants on what specific paperwork is required, what specific information is required, um, if they need to get any further comments or recommendations from other boards, like in the case of an accessory apartment, they have to get recommendations from the planning board and border health. Um, so what I did, and I know I sent you guys a ton of information, so I'm sorry. Um, I revised the application instructions, and then in talking with Lori about applications, um, we kind of came up with the idea of doing a general application for special permits, variances, and appeals that would cover the vast majority of applications, and then a separate application for accessory apartments, and another one for non-conforming uses and structures, because those two tend to be the ones where things may get missed. Um, so I kind of, it's a, it's a mashup of our current applications, and I also referenced the ones from And I also referenced the ones from. Other, like surrounding towns. Um, just ones that I found that seemed really clear and. Exactly what was expected and, and the information that was required. Um. The other goal for this is to then take whatever we land on, whether it's using the ones that we currently have or some version of a revised one. To make it so that applicants can submit an electronic copy via viewpoint. To our department, so. The thought, I spoke with Jim Hegarty about the process with filing with the town clerk. Um, so the thought process now is. That the applicant would still file a hard copy with the town clerk and then submit an electronic copy. Via viewpoint to me. Um, and it's kind of broken down into the different attachments that they would need, the plot plans. The building elevations, whatever it might be. Um, because right now. I mean, realistically, they submit several copies of a. Application and they just kind of sit in a folder. I scan them in and I email them to you, so. Trying to cut out some of that access.
Right, right, okay. And, and the, the way you've got it broken up, is that what you found in some other towns, how it's broken up by accessory apartments, non-conform use?
Yeah, yep. Um, so one of the towns that I was looking at was Concord. Um, because they. They have them broken out like this. Um, they also have an additional one for floodplain. Which, I mean, down the line. If this is something we decide we want to do, I can do that as well, but they're not very common. Um. So I thought I would focus more on. The ones that we see all the time.
I mean, that seems logical to me. Um, that has. Has anybody re- looked at these closely? Do they have any questions or comments on the way? Uh, there, that Laura's proposing these things be broken up and, and sort of repackaged?
Just looking through these as we're talking.
Yeah, I.
Anything just kind of jumps off the pages?
Well, we, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage us to sort of jump in. Uh, it sounds like there's, there is a fair amount of changes here and I, I apologize for not having. Spent more time with it. Uh, Doris, did you have a chance to take a close look at this?
Uh, I, I have. Would I, I don't mind. I don't do this job, so if other towns feels of the breakup streamline, streamlines. Process. Um, because there's a little bit more diligence on some applications, you're gonna need another application, I'm for that. Uh, what I do have a comment is more of a broad comment. And Laura, Laura, I'd written you a couple of weeks ago, was incomplete applications. The, the tendency for applicants to say C attached. And fully i- ignore the fact, please put a summary in. Um, I really like, I really like application lead, I, I call it a lead sheet. I like lead sheets and. And a lot of our applicants don't fill the form out, so it's more of a broader comment and. You know, and we take the meeting, sometimes we take the meeting and sometimes we don't. A lot of, a lot of C attached, C attached. I- it's nice to have it. A summary.
Yeah, I, I would think it would, it would be in the applicant's best, uh, in their interest to sort of say, this is what I'm asking for. This is, this is a summary of it, and here's the related information.
So my comment, yeah, so my comment is, uh, I wouldn't want to necessarily reject. Because they'll often have the attachments, but it's led to confusion where it was so confusing, getting attachments, they said redo the form. Um, so maybe there's a stop, Laura, what I'm saying is a stopgap. You gotta fill this out. I don't, I don't know where that, I don't know who the gatekeeper on that is.
Yeah, so one of the things that I did put in there, um, to address some of that. Is a, um, a building commissioner review step. So that the applicant would bring the application to the building commissioner and they would sign off to say, this is a completed application. Um. The, the tricky thing in, I learned this in speaking with, uh, the town clerk. Is that if somebody brings an application to the town clerk, they have to accept it and they have to file it as presented. Um. So. As much as he encourages people to have Lori review applications, I felt like putting a sign off on the application form itself. Would kind of encourage people to do that a little bit more and hopefully we would receive less incomplete applications.
I agree with Jim, though. The challenge is, is like you can just see somebody being like. Yeah, I, you know, Laura was mean to me. I couldn't deal with her. She wouldn't sign off on it, like. If you want to submit an incomplete application. Uh. You know, that, that's, I, I do feel like that's the, if they want to pay the one fifty fee and. Scribbles and a handwritten note, okay?
Right. I mean, it's within their right to do so. They just. May not get what they're looking for.
As long as it's not a requirement, that's all.
Right, right, because I was gonna say, I mean, we, I think you gotta be careful about what is required legally. I, I don't know that we can say that it's required that she would. She sign off on it, but.
We can't, but we can strongly encourage.
Right, right, okay.
Can we? Um, can we advise people that? You know? If before the meeting we find that the application is incomplete, that we will. Open the meeting on time because we're required to do so, lest have a constructive approval.
Mm-hmm.
Continue the meeting until all applications are, are received.
Yeah, yeah. Um. I think that, so to kind of segue with that. Is, as I was doing this, I realized that there are no posted rules and regulations for the board. And I had found in a filing cabinet, ones from two thousand and seven. Um. So I started to put ones together and I, I just finished them on Tuesday.
Actually, I think we have rules and regulations.
Yeah, I thought we.
I could not find them.
Updated them since I've been on the board.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I thought we.
Yeah, Andrew, Andrew and I spent some time with Aldo, the, the previous town council. And updated the rules and regs for the, for the board.
Okay, do you know where those are?
That is a totally different question.
Yeah, so as far as I can tell, like, they're not. They're not posted on.
No, they're just, they're, they're basically private, you know, in terms of, like. The role of the clerk and the role of the chair and, you know, it's, it's more, it's pretty generic, actually.
Yeah.
So, so where are they? I mean, were those, were those given to the town clerk or does Andrew have them or do you?
I, I, that was. A job and many computers ago, so let me see what I can find.
I mean, if they were adopted by the board, they should be on file with the town clerk, so I can, I can double check with Jim and Amy and see if they have them.
Yeah, the, the trick is, our rules and regulations, they're not part of the town code, that's the thing. So it doesn't necessarily go to the clerk. Because it's not going to be part of the code.
But, but they, but they, they need to be somewhere.
Well, they were part of a meeting, so, you know, at some point in time, they were. Presented, discussed and approved in a meeting by us.
Well, let me, let me ask this question. Do other boards in town have their, um. Those, the rules and regulations posted somewhere that you have access to? Let's. Why don't we, why don't we try to follow what the, what, if there's a de facto standard?
Yeah, I mean, I know the select board has various policies that they have posted.
Hmm.
Um. But those are more like townwide. Um, let's see, surrounding towns, some surrounding towns do have. Specific rules and regulations for the Z B A. Um, I know the town of Wayland has ones that are pretty clear.
Okay. I, I, I mean, the, the first thing I'm curious about is where they belong, where, where they should be. Is I think Craig is right, they're not, it's not code, it's just more, this is, this is how the Z B A operates. But it, it should be someplace.
What could go wrong?
Well, I think we're lost in the woods. Okay, wait a second.
I got your rules right here.
Okay, I say, how do we say, oh, so, uh, what would have, we have procedures, I never. I don't, I don't know if you necessarily consider rules. We have procedures. Our, our administrative procedures aren't public information?
No, I mean. There are, on the existing application instructions, there are like breakdowns of. You know, town responsibilities when it comes to applications. Um. You know, I don't know.
You know.
More than that, like.
But my only concern i- is that, uh. Is that we have latitude. To reject an incomplete application. I, it's one every possibility that they can fairly fill it out. Um, so it's understood, that's it. So I mean, we can.
Well, it's not that we would reject it because.
Not reject.
Have a hearing and just say, hey, we're gonna deny this.
We're gonna, yeah, we recommend that we continue this because.
That's, you know, exactly. But so, sometimes I'm not too much into too many. If it's not the code, too many written rules when. You know, there's a lot of disruption, you know. You know.
So, so we go.
Then they get lost, then they get lost, that's just, and not, not disrespectfully at all, it's just. They're, they're not code, so.
Right, they're not, but I, I, I just think we should be consistent with where they're located. Okay, so regarding the, the.
Sorry, it's not funny.
It is.
But regarding the, the, the changes that Laura's proposing, I, I mean. I'm gonna say, I, I would like to, to look at them a little bit further. I don't think we need to take action tonight. I think they look very good. I think that looks like it's really good work, but I, I would like to take a little bit more time. I don't know. Paul, I don't know if you had any, any, any comments on it or?
I, I know we've, we've discussed this in the past with, you know, various. Different people in, in, that have been in Laura's position, and I'm sort of all in favor of whatever. Makes Laura your job better and easier, you know, and if it's, if it's something you want to implement. That, uh, that's gonna help that, because you're, you know, you're looking at this and seeing this every day. Um, and if it makes sense, then, then, you know, I think it should be, you know, listened to and maybe, you know, implemented.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, when I see this, I look at the checklist. To me, if I, reality is, is we really want to try to make this as simple for the residents as well. So they're able to come.
Correct.
You know.
Okay.
Patient without too much drama on there.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, I think it, I think it looks, it's, it's, it's clean and, and, and you, like you said, Mike, it's, if it makes it simpler for. For, for people who are, you know, filing applications, then, yeah, I'm in favor of it. Go ahead, Doris.
Like, okay, so I read this, I'm reading this, this addition, uh, just. I'm not a lawyer, we got, we've got other lawyers on this call. It says, uh, in this building commissioner review signatory line. The application, all supporting documentation should be, okay, I'm cool with that, be reviewed by the building commissioner prior. To file with town clerk, please drop off your application supporting documentation, but then it goes on to say, at the very last sentence. Maybe we don't want to say incomplete applications will not be signed by the building commissioner. It, it sounds like they're authoritative that this application can be submitted, so. I, I mean, it'd be nice, so what, it really is nice that they sign it. But it, it leads you to believe they have to sign it. It, you know, that's what I think. Maybe just slightly, whatever the real world is, we should say it. And not.
I think, I think, I think.
Like the building commissioner has to get, that has to say.
But it's, but it's not saying that they, that they have to, it's. I think the way it's been worded is to avoid project delays, it should be reviewed. And if it's incomplete, she's not, you know, she's not gonna sign it. So I, 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 I actually think it's, it's reasonably straightforward, but again, I think we should probably. I'm, I'm in favor of taking a little bit of time to look at it, um. Look at, look at it closer offline, there's, there's quite a bit here. I don't know, I don't know how, if anybody else has something. They'd like to discuss further about the, the changed forms.
I, I don't at this time.
Craig, you good with, with the, a review and then taking a. Taking a closer look before the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I definitely am, and I mean, quite honestly, I think. The forms are. Far easier to follow just in the, the new format than.
Yeah.
Before, I mean, I'm, I'm. I like the look.
Yeah, I, I.
Very aesthetically pleasing and seems to be easy for us to understand which boxes have been checked or not. And Doris, it does have a, a checkbox for a project narrative, which is your lead sheet. So.
Yeah, just please don't make me run to the, it's like ten pages in the back. Um, but sure, yeah, I, I. I like the form, a lot of efforts gone into the form itself. It's just we got down this path of incompleteness where. We want to communicate to fill the form out. Dave, it, David, it sounds fine to give a more. Uh, a closer look and we can put it off to the next meeting, it's fine with me. Um, because I'm really just reading, reading that aspect. I haven't had further discussions with Laura since I, maybe a few weeks ago, on the incomplete question. Maybe this will tidy it up. Maybe.
Maybe, it can always help.
Yeah, it's always help.
Okay, so, all right, any, so, um. Before we, we adjourn, uh, adjourn, right now for the next meeting, Laura, is the only thing we have fifteen Main Street?
That is the only thing that's on the agenda as of right now, yep.
Okay.
Well, and will be, because the deadline for applications has passed, so.
Right, right, okay, okay. Uh, is, is there, is there anything, anything else anybody wanted to bring up for discussion this evening?
Are we expecting, uh, the petitioner referenced an opinion letter from town council? Are you expecting that?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it, it's kind of an interesting issue, um. Uh. I think I just like, I, I asked Laura to, to ask the town council some questions regarding. Um, you, you know, rights of the property owner when you, you take down an existing, you know, structure. Um, and there's interesting history there, it's probably read already, so. Uh, and it sounds like the, the applicant, they have some. Interesting ways to go about that they're, they're taking, if you will, a two-pronged approach, but. Uh, so I think we, we, we want, we do want to have as much of that information available before. The hearings as possible.
Okay. All right. Paul?
Paul?
Oh no, he's frozen.
Not a good time to be frozen, Paul.
Paul?
Most important motion.
Oh. I.
Is there a way in Zoom to sort of shake? Somebody else?
In the egg, can I shake?
I hear, I hear him, he's trying.
Okay now.
Go for it.
I'd like to make my motion.
I'm gonna second, I'm gonna second that motion to.
I don't, I don't know, we just. All right, all right.
All right, Craig, why don't you take over?
I'd like to make my motion to adjourn.
Oh, Paul's in there!
Got it.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, all right, motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor say aye, reply with aye, against nay. Doris? Craig?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul? Is that an aye?
Thank you, just.
Uh, you're good? I heard an aye.
I, I think I heard an aye.
I think so.
Okay, thanks, everybody, that will, that will close, that will adjourn the meeting. Have a good.